So do we all have to recuse ourselves from this one, since we all live somewhere within 500 feet?
Anyone who uses public transportation needs to recuse on this item. Just kidding.
Okay, I go home.
Okay, I go home.
Good evening, commissioners. So we get to talk about the Emeryville-Berkley-Oakland Transit Study. So I'm going to quickly review, well, maybe not so quick. I'm going to review what we presented at the community meetings and the Policy Advisory Committee meeting, and a few points about what the Policy Advisory Committee said, and then some hot-off-the-press results from the survey. So this is a project to consider how we can improve transit in Emeryville, West Berkeley, and West Oakland. That is all of Emeryville and then west of San Pablo Avenue and Market Street to connect the area within itself and to regional transit and regional destinations. And we've just, we are wrapping up a big public input process, so we're going to take all the input and store that in with the technical knowledge that our consultants have. They're going to do some modeling and analysis and think about what types of technology could work with the development that we foresee and who could run such a thing, and what may be in the end of our planning period around 2035 or 2040, what development might support the kinds of transit that some people want. This is a Federal Transit Administration grant through Caltrans, and we have a Technical Advisory Committee with staffers from the cities and the transit agencies. And we have a Policy Advisory Committee that has mayor's representatives and people from transit boards, chambers of commerce, West Oakland Commerce Association, East Bay Housing Organizations, and the Center for Independent Living. We're going to take this to the council, and we might have some of the tech members bring it to their boards. Not sure. And then we're going, the consultants are going to develop and evaluate options. Then we'll be back, and we'll have something more for you to look at as far as what you can comment on. So we're envisioning a place where you don't need a car, where you can have access to jobs, recreation, and education, and provide transit for job growth, and both near-term improvements and long-term improvements. Long-term maybe being something like a streetcar or bus rapid transit. And we're coordinating with other plans that are in progress, including the Oakland-Broadway Study and the West Oakland-Specific Plan, an AC Transit Line Study, and a Berkeley Parking Plan. And we also have a context of many existing plans that our consultants have read them all. The study area has 30,000, 33,000 residents now, that's going to double. We have a couple dozen schools, but only 3% of the people who work here live here. We have 4,100 jobs now, and that's going to be half again in the future. A good thing, if you're talking about wanting to support transit, is that 20% of the people in this area, who live in this area, take transit to work. And our land uses include industrial warehouse, wholesale, commercial office, and residential, along with parks and public agency. And you can see on the map that they're not evenly distributed, and they can't necessarily get to each other. Right now, we have 18 AC Transit Lines and BART, both to MacArthur BART, which is outside the area, and to West Oakland BART, which is in it. The Capital Corridor trains run about once an hour, more during peak period and less outside of it. And then we have the Emery Go-Round, and we have the West Berkeley Gateway Shuttle. And I apologize for putting the black-and-white map in your packet, I put a colored one on the dais. How people get to transit, a lot of people walk or drive their cars. We do have, this is a map of bike routes. We do have, even though they could be improved, bike routes in the whole area. The things we have going for us here are, we have a lot of nearby regional transit. We have a lot of jobs, a lot of people are taking transit. We have low car ownership, and we have priority development areas here, which is what the region is using to funnel supportive funding toward development around transit. The problems that we have to address are the cost of whatever we want to do and the need to find funding. We don't have very high population density here. We have our physical barriers and limited right-of-way to put transit something on, and peak-hour congestion on San Pablo Avenue and the streets in Berkeley, some of the Berkeley streets. Now, we have three timeframes here. One is, in the near term, you can do things like change bus routes, maybe add a shuttle, frequency and hours, and then how you get to the transit, and station amenities. In the midterm, you can do some service changes, like maybe add a bus. Changes to the streets, like a bus lane or signal priority, stuff like that. Changes to enhancing the transit center and maybe set up bike sharing. When you get to something you have to build, then it's going to take at least 10 years. Whether it's a streetcar or fixed guideway or light rail. What's full-scale bus rapid transit is, is a dedicated lane and little stations where you can pay your fare before you get on. So that, we're going to be looking at all three of those timeframes. And this big, complex table tells us that the more capacity, speed, and reliability you want, the more cost per mile and the more right-of-way requirements. So this is not just fiscally constrained, it's physically constrained. Major transit, like bus rapid transit or a streetcar, can, along with other efforts, stimulate desired development. Because it expands the commute that people can access the place. It moves people along the corridor. If you want retail, it can increase foot traffic. And most of all, it demonstrates public investment. Because once you've built something, it's there. And that tends to build confidence among the private developers. It takes a certain amount of concentrated development to support a major transit investment. It takes pedestrian-focused design and land use policy near the stations for transit-oriented development. Have a few examples. Bus Rapid Transit in Cleveland has attracted a bunch of development. That's one of those little pay-your-fare stations. In Eugene, that is a bus Rapid Transit. It has its own sort of track-looking thing. And of course, Portland-Oakland, Oregon, the famous Pearl District, which has grown partly because of the streetcar. A timeframe for, not the plan we're doing now, but for planning a project, if it's something that is a service change, it's like one to five years. If it's something that is a capital improvement, it's going to be five to 10 years or more. Because you have to do alternatives, analysis, design, environmental assessment, and construction. The Policy Advisory Committee had a bunch of ideas, but these three popped out as sort of little surprises. Development Project Review, that's us in this room. When there's a use permit or design review application, we need to think about opportunities for bus stops. Is there a bus route we've been trying to change? And is this project along that route? And could we maybe make a pullout? And that the planners should pull out, design with transit, AC Transit's manual, and think about that. Another one was that attracting development requires development incentives and marketing, as well as zoning and transit. Parking and travel lanes, they thought they could be removed on some streets as negotiated with the businesses there. Depends where you are. And then we today got results from our questionnaire. Some were about, and these, there were several things, but I just wanted to pull out what the respondents said about how we could improve transit. In terms of expanding transit service, they want more frequent buses, shuttles, and trains, more evening and weekend service, accurate next bus, coordinating among the different transit services. Emery Go-Round, they, a lot of people would like to see Emery Go-Round go to West Oakland BART Station. And we're not necessarily talking about the TMA now. Who is going to do this is up in the air. More peak-hour service, reliable, predictable service, and of course, the Watergate Towers stop. Other shuttles, West Berkeley and West Oakland would like one too. And also, bigger buses to reduce crowding and more employer shuttles. People mentioned the Kaiser Shuttle, which...
Doesn't West Berkeley have a shuttle?
West Berkeley has a small employer-funded shuttle that goes from the Ashby BART Station to Bayer and Wareham.
Okay.
That they would like more.
But, and it's, is it only, can it only be used by employees?
They don't check an ID, but that's the idea.
Okay.
They don't go to Fourth Street in Delaware.
And I think it's only during peak hour, isn't it?
I don't know. I would imagine, because that's when people need to go to work.
So you don't see little old people with shopping baskets?
Right. They can get on, but it doesn't go to the shopping anyway. So they'd like to see that. And then more BART parking options, better safety, lighting, seating, cleanliness, maintenance of the vehicles and the stops. And you can't talk about transit without talking about how to get to it. So we had a lot of ideas about bike infrastructure, dedicated bike lanes that are green and have rumble strips, bike awareness signs, a BART car for bikes, bike lanes on 40th Street, bike bridges over the railroad tracks at, somebody mentioned Powell Street, and bike lockers at the BART stations. So there is potential funding out there, it's very competitive. There's always the option of tax measures, both county and I guess city can do it. MTC and Air District Grants, public-private partnerships, privately-sponsored transit. I just read an article about Detroit, their city is broke, but the Kaiser Foundation and other people are building a streetcar and waterfront improvements, and they're not waiting for the city, they're just doing it. And there's Fairbox revenue is another option. And then the state has three different kinds of funding sources. And then the Federal Transit Administration has New Starts, Very Small Starts, Small Starts, and Tiger, which stands for Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery, which is what especially part of this area really needs. And I think there still are earmarks. So discussion questions, and I'm going to read them all off, and then y'all can just talk. What trips do people make or want to make? What issues are there? What ideas or desires are there? What will be needed for planned development? What could people give up in terms of parking or travel lanes? How would people be willing to fund transit? And what issues did I not think to ask about? So that's all I have to say, and I'm really interested to hear what you have to say. Any questions first?
Did, maybe I missed this, but is the study, did this study start with certain goals? Or is the study itself trying to identify certain goals?
I'll answer that with two things. One is it evolved from somebody falling in love with streetcars and bringing it back to the council and commission, and the council and staff saying, well, you can't just go out and build a streetcar. You have to do a feasibility study and figure out what mode really works. So that was the reason for it. What we, what the grant application said was, we're going to look at how we can improve transit here. And so the goal is really to define a project. I think our primary goal is to define something that could be built. But we also want to address the short and medium-term goals.
So I guess I'm just trying to understand, so the, that thing that might be built, the goal of it would be to get people to transit, get transit to people?
Oh, okay.
Move people through the plan area, move people to and from the plan area, that kind of thing?
Someone we talked to used the word "comb", because we're trying to connect the West Oakland-Emeryville, West Berkeley area within itself, which is mostly north-south, and connect it better to mostly BART, but also AC Transit's regional lines and Amtrak Capital Corridor. So there's two goals.
Okay, thanks.
And they're not one line that can do all that, I don't think, somehow.
Well, Diane, if I could jump in, it's also, we're not looking to identify one particular vehicle or mode. We're looking at what would best serve to accomplish the needs of connecting West Oakland-Emeryville and West Berkeley to each other and to transit choices. So it's kind of a broad-based study. It kind of started as one thing, and it kind of grew into something more broad-based. How do we really make this better all around?
Mm-hmm. I think you stated it better than I could.
The little parts without the whole, how it connects to the Capital Corridor, to the San Francisco, to all those things.
So a transit system really is composed of several parts, of several different kinds of things.
When, I mean, I've heard a lot of it, and I, I mean, regarding routing the Emery Go-Round to West Oakland, or whether that's feasible or makes sense. Have there been studies as to how many people live east of the hills that work in Emeryville? Because I think that's probably, you know, the argument on the opposite end.
We do know where people live who work in Emeryville, and they live everywhere. Some of them live really far away. So getting them here mostly means what the Emery Go-Round does, which is connecting them to BART.
Are there any sort of overarching patterns in those, you know, those, where people live? I mean, do, you know, are there any clusters? Do more people live, you know, in this side of the hills versus the other, you know?
When we were working on the Sustainable Transportation Plan, I took this data and I sort of made threshold cutoffs by people that are within the AC Transit service area, people that are within the Capital Corridor service area, people that are within driving distance, people that have to fly. They're from everywhere, and some of them are very far. But there are a lot of them that are within the AC Transit service area. I don't know if that answers, there's not, I didn't see any clusters.
Is it a majority?
That's one of the issues about the connection to the West Oakland BART Station, which I think, you know, a lot of people want that connection.
Yeah.
But if you look at the patterns, commute patterns of both Emeryville residents going to work elsewhere and people from elsewhere coming to work in Emeryville, I don't believe the majority are coming from or going to San Francisco. The majority are coming from east, north, and south, East Bay, or beyond. So West Oakland BART certainly would provide a better connection to San Francisco, but it doesn't necessarily serve the majority of the folks who are coming and going to Emeryville.
In commuters. Right. It wouldn't serve a lot more in commuters, proportionally speaking.
Well, there are a lot of students that live in Watergate, where I live, who go to Berkeley, and they use the Emery Go-Round in BART.
Right.
And I volunteer in Berkeley one day a week, and I do the same thing.
I think the reason the Emery Go-Round decided to connect to the MacArthur Station is that even though it's a little bit longer to get to San Francisco, if you're only going to connect to one BART Station, they were trying to pick the, kind of the main one, the one that connects to all the different BART lines.
Well, the other thing it's got is the buses from Kaiser and Alda Bates, and the different Kaiser, they all come there. So you can take the Emery Go-Round up there and then take another shuttle.
And then take the Kaiser bus.
And I think that's a big thing, too.
I think, I mean, I don't know for sure, but it does strike me that MacArthur BART is more transit-rich than West Oakland BART.
Ideally, we'd have connections to multiple BART stations to serve lots of needs.
Yeah, I happened to attend all three of the community meetings on the EBOT study in Oakland, here and in Berkeley. And most people wanting the connection to West Oakland, and the people that came to the city council meeting the last time, are people that work in San Francisco. And it's a, it's a direct connection, one stop, bam, you're downtown. So that's mainly the thing. And when I first moved here, Pacific Park Plaza had a bus that they hired and paid to take people to San Francisco directly. But the ridership fell off of that, and they couldn't sustain itself anymore. So I think this is still a thing we're at play with, is, you know, can we actually get the ridership to do that? And I think what this whole study is trying to do is, along with Emeryville, would we pick up people eventually in West Oakland? Right now, West Oakland is not rich along the Mandela Parkway with residents, but they're hoping eventually it will become that way, and so we can pick up people from Emeryville and West Oakland to the West Oakland BART Station.
So the original plan with Mandela Parkway was to put in high-rise buildings.
Lots of them.
The locals didn't want it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, I for one would love an Emery Go-Round, whatever this thing is, connection to West Oakland BART. It would not be a commute route for me, but it would be a really convenient transit connection to go to San Francisco and places across the bay.
Should, this is just a ques, I mean, should we just go down the line and rattle off thoughts? Or is that what you're looking for, input from us?
We're looking for comments on these questions.
You want to start?
Well, I mean, one item that I, I know this is a lot about West Berkeley, Emeryville, West Oakland, but the one thing that I always find is lacking is a connection to downtown Berkeley. And, you know, it just seems like, I always wonder why there isn't a line that runs up Stanford, Adeline, Shattuck.
The F bus, I've taken it.
The unknown F bus does that in a very satanicous way. And that's part of what we're hoping to do, is kind of streamline that direction to do that.
Because, I mean, I don't know that, I don't know the, I mean, it's not showing up here, and it's, I don't know its frequency, but, you know, when I want to get to downtown Berkeley, I pretty much drive, because it's five minutes for me versus a half hour of getting on the Emery Round, going to, you know, going to MacArthur BART, and then taking MacArthur BART.
Well, there's signage, and the newest buses don't even have pull cords.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot.
Crazy.
A lot of things going on. Yeah, yeah, a lot of, he was saying, a lot of the newer buses don't have pull cord, so people have to yell out their stops from the back of the, back of the bus.
True. Oh, yeah, it's a goofy system.
Yeah, yeah.
Two of the newer buses, the bus-looking buses don't have those.
Yeah, so people all rush up to the front when it's their turn, when they need to get off, so they make sure the driver cares them.
And then they cut off Watergate condominiums.
Yeah, yeah, which is huge.
Without notice.
And then, just, you know, I often find that the buses, you know, the AC Transit buses are clean, but then their bus stops are dark, not well-kept. The next bus information is often broken. So those who would maybe be comfortable using the buses are maybe not comfortable using the bus stations. Some comments?
Okay. All right, so let's see, you have yours labeled A through G. I had mine 1 through 7, so I'm all screwed up. So let me start with the first one. So the question was, what trips do the constituents make within or to from the area? Well, I think in general, I mean, we have so, so many centers that people come to, you know, to arrive at, whether it's shopping, or whether it's, you know, whether it's entertainment or having access to our waterfronts. And I think what I found, or what I find lacking, or at least what I'm hearing, is that it's very difficult to get to the areas that you want to access, either for shopping or for retail. And I really find that having access to the waterfront is something that's very lacking in terms of getting there by public transit. And I think it's really important for, you know, just for healthy living and for families, and just in general, that people who have pets, whatever, to be able to access the waterfronts. And I think that that's very difficult around here. So I just want to highlight that. Because I know that, based upon what I've read in the study and what's been said at the community meetings, that in general, public transit is a challenge between the, just between the cities, between West Oakland, Emeryville, and Berkeley. As far as issues, I think the reliability has definitely been an issue. And then safety and just knowing, and that the service lines are somewhat limited. So I think there needs to be some improvements there in just having more bus lines, or at least, or maybe rerouting them so that they're more efficient. And we don't have just these empty buses that are kind of up and, running up and down streets. You don't know where they're going or who are they serving. As far as improvements, I think, again, just having more, the more immediate improvements we can make are just having more efficient bus routing. And I guess I'm not, I wasn't clear on why we couldn't or why the study viewed having emissions-free buses as sort of a longer-term goal as opposed to a shorter-term goal. Cleaner buses, that is. I don't know if there was a specific reason for that, why that was categorized in the beyond the three-year term. So that's something I'd be interested to know. I'm going to skip over E. I mean, I think, I think people would be willing to give up parking for transit, so I didn't really have any comments there. I think the real big issue is the funding. And there's, there's a lot of information in this, in the documents that we received that refer to other studies and other articles, and there's just so much information. And I was really trying to make my way through all this information, and I was really focusing on, I think there was a link to an article that I found with regard to the Cleveland Healthline system. And it talked about, I think the article was called "More Development for Your Transit Dollar". And it touched on a lot of things, but in terms of the funding, it really focused on, in order to improve transit, you also need to have support at the government in your local level. So it sort of, it touched on many things, but I think for our discussion, I wanted to kind of raise some other issues about whether, in Emeryville, what are we doing to support developments that could bring improvements to transit? So are we doing incentives for developers that would make transit improvements? Is that something that we should look at and maybe bring into policy or into our standard conditions?
Making, people building apartment houses now become part of the group that supports Emery Go-Round.
Right, so, but in terms of, like, are the transit passes, is that something that, you know, right now, we have that kind of as, we're encouraging it, but should we look at making those sorts of measures more of a...
We don't have enough...
Yeah, more of a mandatory, is that like too radical?
Right.
We don't have enough AC Transit bus service to even use those things.
Well, it's sort of a chicken-and-egg thing. That's what, that's what the reverse has been happening over the years. The fares go up, less people use it, they cut back the service, less people use it, so the fares go up, so less people use it. And what we need to do is figure out ways to reverse that, and I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to open the discussion up for. I mean, I think that everything, we probably can agree on, all the things that are mentioned in the study and in the, in the community meetings. But I guess, you know, what are, what are we to do with that to take that a step further? So, you know, so that, I mean, that goes to the bonus points. But yeah, I understand the chicken-and-the-egg thing, but that doesn't mean that, that we can't collectively agree that it's a priority for our projects, and that that's what we want to see when developers are bringing their projects to us, that they don't overlook that, so.
There was mention of, somewhere in the report, about AC Transit guidelines being a part of project design review?
AC Transit has a book out, which I have in my office, called "Designing with Transit", "Design with Transit", something like that. And it's about, I've used it actually to think about how a bus stop fits in front of a project, or else then they move the bus stop. Mostly, they want to make, this was Greg Harper, who's on the AC Transit Board, and he said, people wanted to, the F bus to stop on Powell Street, and you had a project on Powell Street, and you didn't make them have a bus pullout. So to just bear that in mind when we're looking at projects.
You know, well, since you brought that up, I just want, because it's the one note I wrote. And I always, I'm hearing conflicting information now that they don't want to put a bus stop there because it doesn't have a pullout. I thought the idea is they didn't want pullouts because it was hard for the bus to get back into traffic. So what is the case then? Do we want pullouts, or do we need them?
It sometimes depends on whether it's near-side stop or far-side stop, and that designing with transit really goes into a lot of detail about the lengths and the pullouts and the preferred places to put it on an intersection.
But I didn't, so what I heard from the conversation with Greg Harper is that we won't put them on Powell Street because we can't have pullouts. But it's like, well, then we can't design every route to have a pullout. You know, we need the route on Powell Street, we need to make it work with or without a pullout.
And it's notable, like, there are some examples, like in Alameda on Webster Street and Park Street, where they've designed recent streetscape improvements with bus stops, where, you know, with improvements where the bus stops in the travel lane specifically. And they've designed that into it, so.
The F bus stops at Trader Joe's, and there's no pullout there.
Right.
And it stops at that stop across from...
I don't know that 90% of their buses have pullouts in any route. So to use that as an excuse why we can't change a route or we can't put the... as an excuse why we can't change a route, or we can't put this here, I'm having a hard time with that. And, and my thought was, they didn't want pullouts anyway, because it made buses harder to get back into traffic.
We actually had peer-in-piers do a study about how to help the buses run better, and they suggested the idea of pullouts, but there's a real trade-off there. There are some streets that don't have much traffic. It's really easy to have pullouts. So, okay, we can do that. They're not real needed there. There are some streets that have kind of a medium level of traffic, and if there's a place for, where you could take away parking or something, or the cars could somehow get around, you can have a pullout. And then there are streets that have a lot of traffic, like Powell Street, which leads to the freeway. And if you have a pullout, it will make a big difference in the traffic backup. So I don't know if our city is to the point of being willing to put up with that, or even the county, because those streets are on county network.
Any more, Carrie?
I think you made really good points about the TMA practices, that we really emphasize those, and I think a lot of different jurisdictions are doing that. And the more that that's done, the more people will be inclined to use transit, and it's the, you know, getting back, reversing that trend that's gone, what I think is the wrong way for a long time. There's a lot of, as far as I can tell, there really are big deficits in getting north-south, you know, from here to Fourth Street, or to University Avenue, or whatever. Any, just anything west of San Pablo is pretty poorly connected. Reliability, I think, is a huge issue, and also just frequency and the hours of operation. You know, you get, take BART from San Francisco and come back at 11 o'clock at night, and you're going to walk a long way if you don't have cab fare. So expanding hour, those are operational things that can be done, but, you know, I understand they all cost more, and so it's, getting people to use it is really important. I think building things into the infrastructure as well, whether it's bus pullouts, or just, you know, more bus shelter, requiring somebody to put in a bus shelter. AC Transit won't put in bus shelters. They don't pay for them. They have, the advertising companies will pay for them, or a developer. So there are things physically that we can ask for when a development is coming in, and say, you have to put a bus shelter. You have, you know, maybe not a pullout, but at least you have to have someplace where people can wait, and where they know that the bus is going to come. Funding is a challenge. Everybody need, you know, that's, that's a big one.
The Emery Go-Round came into existence, sort of a growth of environmental impact requirements for new developments in Emoryville, that they had to provide transportation. And it started on a kind of a small scale, and it grew. And in the last three years, it's made an enormous jump in traffic, which then presents a lot of other problems for them in terms of revenue source. And some of the, the people that pay are on the board that runs the thing. And they're mostly office building owners, and some difficult people that don't want to pay. And they sort of recently stopped, I mean, held back on the amount of increase in their, in their tax. And that's caused a lot of problems.
What was the justification given for that?
You know, one guy didn't, Ken Mikowski represents him, and he owns some older buildings north of, I mean, east of Hollis, in the high 60s. And there, you know, have very few employees, and he's got parking for them. So why should he be paying these fees? This is the same group that fought undergrounding power, because they didn't want to pay. So, you know, there's that element, too, that we're dealing with, that, and, you know, they want everybody in Watergate to pay. Well, that would be, I think, an annual increase in their dues of $100 or something. Well, a lot of them don't use it, so they would probably vote it down. So there's all kinds of subtleties here that are hard to figure out. You know, the government has to pay for it, and we're in a no-tax mode.
Well, we all have to pay for it ultimately.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, so I'll, I'll start with funding. Yeah, I mean, I think in general, transit, transit agency funding is sort of screwed up. It was really interesting, actually, to go to one of the, I went to one of the workshops, and I had a lot of, like, transit wonky people at my table, which was really interesting. And one of, one was a BART director, and he was saying, and somebody, and there were other people that, I don't know, that worked for AC Transit or whatever, and he was saying that a lot of the property taxes that BART collects gets passed through to AC Transit and to one other agency. I forget what it is, but that was, yeah, but that was in BART's enabling legislation, like in, in, in the, you know, the, when the legislature created the BART district, they did that on purpose, probably to win support. And that's just, you know, it's one, I mean, I'm glad AC Transit's getting the funds, but it's, you know, it's a pretty screwed-up way to get it, if you ask me. So just, you know, things like that. I think, just in general, we need to look at more stable, long-term funding sources for our transit. I mean, if we could get, if we could get BART to, you know, stop funding suburban extensions and fund some urban extensions that, you know, might garner some additional ridership, I think that would be a, that would be a win, too. But anyway, I'm just going to make some comments about specific transit improvements that I would like to see. Like I said, I did go to the workshop, so I participated in sort of answering a lot of these questions already. I think, for me, the number-one improvement that AC Transit could make, that would really speed up service immensely, is an educational program that educated people to exit the rear doors of the buses. It's a huge problem. I mean, they could save up, like, I think up to 30 seconds a stop. And that would dramatically increase their things. And it happened, it's so funny to me, because it happens anywhere else you go and ride the bus. It just happens that way.
Well, in San Francisco, you see them climbing in the back door and knocking.
Different issue.
So, anyway, so that's my suggestion for that. The, the F-line, I love the F-line, but it is sort of, it's a little painfully slow going to Berkeley. It stops every five feet along Market Street. So I don't, I, I really actually want to keep it stopping at 40th and San Pablo. I think that's a really important transit hub. A lot of people use it there. There are other TransBay buses that stop there, but not with the frequency of the F. So I think you would really see TransBay boardings go down at that location if it no longer stopped there. But I do absolutely appreciate the desire to speed up the F and streamline it. I would like to see, as a standard condition of approval, I think this goes a long way to get, just getting more people on transit, and thus improving surface, service, I would love to see as a standard condition of approval for us and other cities in this, I think it might actually be for other cities in this study area, that projects of a certain size are required to use the AC Transit's EZ Pass program. I think it's an amazing program. You get passes at such a discount. It just, it doesn't make sense not to for a lot of projects. I think the rapid, the AC Transit Rapid Services are really important and really awesome. That's sort of, I have sort of this threshold for riding the bus, and apparently, it's the Rapid Bus. Because I love the 72R. I ride the 57 from time to time. I don't really like it. And I think the 57 is a route that's prime for a Rapid Service. It's a heavily, heavily-used route. They use the reticulated buses, which just tells you how many people use it. So, anyway, if AC Transit's listening, that's a good one. And so I'll finish my comments.
I think, didn't the 57 have a Rapid Line for a period of time?
Oh, I don't know.
I mean, I, I grew up riding the 57 as a kid, and they, I think they did for a while. Now they've gone back to the.
Is that a San Pablo bus?
No, this was one that was taking MacArthur all the way, basically all the way through Oakland.
Yeah, and, and actually, later, later service, like, later-night service of the Rapid Buses would really help. Like, I've gotten stuck places before, because I took the 72R somewhere, and I got too late, and it's going to take me twice as long to get home on the 72.
Yeah, I would agree with the later service. That's one of the main things. And I really, really like, Kyrie, your ideas about making the TMAs more mandatory, as opposed to, I'd like to take them off the bonus system altogether, if this is really important to us as a city, that we, and it's that chicken-and-egg thing. We have to build it before it's going to happen, so.
You mean TDMA or TDM?
Oh, sorry, TDM, TMA, TDM. Thank you. And.
Well, what are, so the TMA is, is the district that runs the Emery Go-Round, right? Is that?
I meant TD, Transportation Management.
The authority, the agency, though.
Yeah.
I think it's called, I think it's Sensor Transportation Management Association.
I'm having an 11:04 PM moment.
That being said, I am not a transit wonk, so I'm going to move it right along to someone who probably has something to say something.
I really don't, and I could really move this along, because, Diane, I don't know if you're seeing the same thing I am, but this is consistent with everything that's already been told to us in the, in the workshops, in the server floors. At least, it's running consistent, and I think this is something we can run with. It's like, these are, and we have the goals. These are the short-term things. What can we do to do this? And I don't, I haven't heard anything new here. I've heard a twist on it, or some variations, but it's basically pretty much all the same thing, and I think we have the ball, and it's time to run with it. That's my comments.
Wow. Okay. Have we gotten enough feedback from?